It's three o'clock, we call it to order. Our first order of business is the COVID-19 Town of Andover Information Briefing. Eric, would you like to proceed?
Sure. As you know, we're kind of in the midst of a pandemic. So far, Andover has been relatively unscathed. We have no reports, no reported cases of COVID-19 in Andover. That doesn't mean we don't have any. It just means nobody here has gotten tested and has tested positive. So I sent some information to the board earlier, which was just the extrapolated data, basically from the cases so far in Connecticut, both of the number of people who were sick and also the number of dead. So you can consider that or not at your leisure. So what the town has done is done two things. The first is prioritize putting in place a mechanism for food and food distribution to those that most need it, which tend to be the people that have been needing the food bank services. As many of you know, we've shut down senior transportation because it's basically impossible to do a reasonable job of social distancing if you're transporting multiple people in vehicles. So we have instead switched to a mechanism for delivery of food to those people who use senior transportation to get food in the past. And we also have an arrangement in place with Ted's Market and the CERT team. So there, basically, you can call into the town. You'll be relayed to the CERT team, and you'll be able to essentially order food through Ted's Market and have it delivered. And this, again, is a service for people who either are getting sick and really can't be out and about, or are in an elderly, really high-risk category, and don't have any family member that can supply them with food. So we're doing what we can to supply services to those people that need it the most. We are also, at this point, keeping the majority of town employees working from home. And we've done two things with that. One, we've had our IT provider install the firewalls that we were purchasing anyway as part of the IT upgrade for the town hall. Excuse me. And the second thing is that we're enabling the employees to be able to remote into the office and work from home. And the way it's working is that employees, they're not prohibited from coming to the town hall. They're all having to come to the town hall at least a couple times a week to get what they need to do business, but to do as much of their work from home whenever they can. So that's most of what we've been doing on the town's side. Does anybody have any specific questions about, you know, kind of what we're doing and where we're at?
No, I would just like to sit there and talk to the other selectmen about, you know, with all of the issues going on, it's imperative that we sit there and communicate directly to our residents in one cohesive voice. So we all are members of the Board of Selectmen with opinions and with a vote. And so as we sit there and do this, I would ask that we allow Eric to be that one voice for us. So we make the decisions, Eric implements the action, and we all move forward. So I commend Eric on doing such a good job so far, Eric. And you have to turn that phone on. It's called airplane mode. Okay, good. So anyway, as I was going, you know, we make our decisions, and we have Eric implement them as best he possibly can. So in these times, it's very difficult for the community. And I would sit there and give the other members of the Board of Selectmen who recommended very early on that we take some decisive action related to our seniors. I think it prevented some cases in town that could have been difficult for our community to swallow. So early on, the decision to prevent the St. Patrick's Day party, I think, was a very wise decision, and I commend the other members who led that charge. So anyway, Eric, go ahead now. You can keep going. Anybody else with questions? Issues? Okay, so let's move to our next topic, which is our budget, Town Budget Timeline Number Two. Eric, I know you have some issues. I know that we have some information provided us by the town attorney as to the process the governor has put in place for budget and getting budgets approved. So why don't you proceed to give us the highlights of what we need to get done?
Okay, so I'll give you the highlights of that. And the town's attorney is also on with us. So if I say anything incorrectly, Dennis, feel free to correct me. But basically, what the governor's executive order said was that the Board of Selectmen, or as it pertains to Andover, is that the Board of Selectmen shall empower the Board of Finance to pass a budget and set a mill rate. So didn't say might, didn't say if it's convenient, said that's what towns have to do. So we got a legal opinion from the town's attorney and basically asked him to say, is there any wiggle room? Are there other options available to us? And Dennis can speak to that more directly, but from everything I know, the answer is no. That will be the procedure that the town will have to follow. And Dennis, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, in my view, that's the procedure that the town will have to follow as of today. I mean, this is obviously, as you can see from the governor issuing orders on a daily basis, this is a moving target, and things may change, and hopefully we'll get lucky. You've already, at your last meeting that I attended quietly, I heard you make a resolution to postpone the process by 30 days, which means that your next event in the process, you know, if it weren't for this coronavirus crisis and the legal problems created by the governor's orders would be around the 1st of June to the 12th of June. So you don't really have to do anything now unless you're not planning on meeting until after that point, and I doubt that that's the case, to issue any orders to the Board of Finance to follow my opinion in any way. And it's, again, it is subject to change. I want to tell you that I, you know, when I first was asked by Eric to issue an opinion, I, of course, looked around everywhere I could possibly think. And I've got a lot of experience, I know a lot of people, I know a lot of sources, looking for, to see if I could find anything else, any other legal opinions on this issue. And I found nothing. Okay, I did talk to a policy person down at CCM about this. I didn't, you know, do this in a vacuum. I looked again today to see if there was anything other than my own opinion that I've sent to you, and I haven't seen anything else. So as of now, my opinion stands. I mean, but it's, you know, again, it's a day-to-day thing. And you have done what you need to do up to now. But if you reach that point and there's been no change, the governor's order stays in place or isn't modified in a way to make it things different, you would really have to, in my view, follow through with a resolution authorizing the Budget Making Authority, and in your town, that is, of course, the Board of Finance, to do the budget and hopefully to do the budget prior to the end of the fiscal year, as it should. So there wouldn't be any town meeting, annual town meeting, or referendum. And that's my opinion, you know, until I disagree with it. For some other reason, some other, somebody can talk me out of it. Or, you know, and of course, you know, you don't have to follow my opinions. I'm just an advisor. I'm not an elected member of the Board of Selectmen. I don't have the power. But that's my advice. And believe me, I did study that matter very carefully and extensively. And, you know, I think you're up to speed so far. But, you know, you may down the road, unless there's, unless we get very lucky and we're out of this thing, and I don't have to stay home to protect myself, and you don't have to do the same. You know, this is the way it's going to be. And the Board of Finance is going to be the budget maker and determinator this year without official, any control, let's say, by the town meeting or the referendum. On the other hand, under the governor's Order 7B, there are lots of requirements that you have to fulfill in order to get all the public comment that is necessary. In other words, input, input and control, of course. And I have to make people in my town aware of that from time to time. Input does not equal control. It's input.
So Dennis, so if that is the case, then we just have to proceed along a timeline that makes sense for our community and get as much input as we possibly can. So, okay. So your opinion is extremely thorough.
A quick question. Dennis, you threw out the June timeframe?
Yeah.
Now, that would be for the, if we were normally to go to referendum, it would be like the beginning of May. So you're saying we would, if the 30-day extension allows us to push this out until June?
Correct, Adrian. That would be, and that would be the first event in the process, which under your charter is the annual town meeting.
Well, that would generally happen the end of, or middle to end of April. We normally would have a public comment with Board of Finance somewhere around the 18th to the 23rd, somewhere in there, that timeframe. And then we'd have a town meeting the last week of April. And then about 10 days into May, we would actually have the referendum.
Well, my reading of the charter, I may be wrong. You've been living with it. You've been Chair of the Board of Finance. My reading of the charter is that your annual town meeting doesn't occur until May.
No, it's always been before that. It's generally been gauged off of the budget cycle, like when we got stuff. Because it, there's a, once you have the meeting, you have to have the referendum within so many days, you know? So.
So I think if you look at the charter, and I was reviewing that again today, I think your drop-dead date per the charter, given that you've allowed yourself a 30-day extension to make a decision, is really the 14th of June. On the 14th of June, you have to have set the budget. I would suggest we don't wait till the very last day, and we give ourselves a little leeway. But in the end, on the 14th of June, the Board of Finance will have had to have approved a budget and set the mill rate.
What's the cutoff date for the bills to go out on time?
Um, so... That's a good question.
Sorry.
That's another way of me saying I don't actually know. But I would hope that if you knew it 15 days in advance, it would be in everybody's hands.
Um, it's not the budget itself. It's for setting the mill rate because all that has to go to the printers and then get printed and sent out. So I remember that, and I didn't want to say it because I was, I'm afraid that I'm going to be off by a dare too. But I remember, I thought it was like June 15th. So I think your date may be fine, but that was my concern.
Well, we're going to have a problem. We're going to have a problem with QDS anyway. I just sent out to all the members of the Board of Selectmen the newest, the newest memo from the governor's office, which relates to the tax delay, the payment delay. So we're going to have to get with QDS anyway, Adrian. So we'll have to find that answer out because they're going to have to make some adjustments in the software to allow for potential furls and deferments of payments. So we'll sit there and get through that. But I don't think there's any time to really delay. You know, we may have a 30-day window to delay, but the way that this virus is going and the way that this whole issue is going, we're not really going to be able to count on anything. So if we're going to open this budget discussion up for as much public input as possible, we really need to start setting a process and how we're going to go about doing it.
If I can cut in, I'd like to. I don't want to be rude, you know? Don't forget, I'm from Willimantic. Anyway.
I thought you were originally from New Britain.
I was originally from New Britain, the mean streets of New Britain. That's right.
You sang to New Britain a while ago.
You'll have to take that into account when you entertain me at a meeting. Anyway, or entertain what I have to say. Anyway, I just want to make sure that Adrian isn't mixing up. And, you know, with all due respect, Adrian.
No, no, please.
Public comment with town meeting. Because public comment can go on right now. I mean, you can, the Board of Finance is, I would encourage the Board of Finance, as they work through the budget, to have, you know, substantial public comment. I think that's part of the, what the governor, the governor wants in his orders, which would be order, yeah, it's mostly in 7B Paragraph 1. Okay, and you really, you have to comply with that for this meeting that we're having right now. And this applies to all meetings. And, you know, public comment is definitely a good idea all the way, you know, and Jeff is right in that regard. That should be going on, you know, now or soon, as much as possible. Because if the public isn't going to get a chance to vote in a town meeting or in a referendum, they sure as heck need to have as much, many opportunities for public comment as you can reasonably provide. And I think that's what the governor's orders, both by the letter and the spirit, are aimed at.
Dennis, we're going to talk in a little bit later and what our plan is for soliciting feedback. Because we're going to work really hard to get as much public commentary as we absolutely can. If you would like, and Amanda, you give me the ability to share my screen, I'll show you what I had kind of tentatively have in terms of dates, and we can discuss whether we think that's realistic. Amanda?
You're all set. Go ahead.
Do you see on the bottom of your screen the green arrow?
Yep, I got it.
Just while there's a lull here, we had our public hearing last year on April 23rd and moved at that meeting to send a referendum after.
Public hearing or?
Well, what we've always done in the past is we had the public hearing, the meeting, and then after that, we would immediately have a meeting to then forward it to referendum. So we had ours the 23rd of April last year.
Yeah, I suppose there's nothing wrong with having it early.
No, I'm not proposing that.
No, no, I mean, I'm talking about last year.
We've done that pretty much every year that I was involved, that I know of, so.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so obviously, right now, it's about April 3rd. You know, I've put out to all of you before, but basically, on April 22nd, that's Ram's drop-dead date for passing their budget. Okay, so we will have the final Ram number on April 22nd. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is the 13th. And there likely, we're going to want to have at least one more budget workshop with the Board of Selectmen. My suggestion is that by April 27th, the Board of Selectmen, you know, at a special meeting, submits the budget to the Board of Finance and, you know, does an authorization to the Board of Finance to hold a public meeting, adopt a budget, set the mill rate. Okay? So that's kind of what I'm proposing for that. And, you know, and that's going to dovetail with a plan, which we'll talk about a little later, in how we get that information to the public and how we solicit comments. Because if the residents can't vote, we need to do everything we can to enable their voices to be heard. So that would be my suggestion. And after that, it's the Board of Finance's responsibility. They have between April 22nd and the 20th of May to hold workshops and do their due diligence on the budget. The 20th of May would be an online budget presentation slash public budget meeting for the Board of Finance. And then there will be an additional comment period. And hopefully, on around June 8th, the Board of Finance adopts the budget and sets the mill rate. That pushes out most of our 30-day window. Still leaves a week of fallback if they get to the 8th and they still can't quite pass a budget. So that's what I would suggest, giving yourselves enough time to work through the project or work through it in terms of a timeline. And then what myself and Barbara are going to need from the Board of Selectmen collectively is some guidance on where you want to go from the budget that was presented to you previously to a budget that you think would be acceptable.
Well, the Board of Finance at their last meeting asked, asked the Board of Selectmen, and you were part of that conversation, to try to get it down to a single-digit number. And they also were looking for some further reduction from the school. Now, I don't know that the schools had a meeting since then, so obviously, they probably haven't had a chance to address it. But have you had a chance to work anything up that would meet their requirements yet, Eric?
I can certainly, what I want, I can certainly present a budget to the board which satisfies that and minimizes the town budget without, you know, doing major sacrifices. It will put a bunch of our projects and priorities off to future dates, but it will minimize the impacts to taxpayers. What I can't do, though, is I can't cut enough to account for the increase in the Ram budget.
No, I don't think that's what they were asking. But they were, I think, if I remember the Board of Finance notes correctly, they were looking for a single-digit increase. Correct. Get down, you know, to whatever the lowest number is in single digits that we can accomplish without, obviously, killing what, you know, what we need to do. Can you work something up like that? I mean, obviously, you're dealing with this stuff every day. We can propose a lot of things, but you have to live with the consequences of that. So it might make more sense for you to be the starting point at this point.
So I've certainly worked through a number of budget options. And if you tell me roughly what you want me to present as a board, I can present that in pretty short order, within the next day or so.
Something under two mils, I think, would be nice. Anybody else?
Well, my issue, Adrian, is that it, our meetings are going to come together. But at one meeting, we sat there and requested a decrease from our own Board of Education of approximately $400,000. And we all voted unanimously on that. And then we just received a budget today, a new budget amount with a $55,000 decrease. So my question to the other members of the Board of Selectmen is, is when we go and we present anything back to the Board of Finance, the biggest issue ends up being we can continue to cut the priorities that we believe we set for the town to try to improve our road and to do maintenance on our buildings and to actually add staff where appropriate. But if we don't hold the Board of Education to the numbers that we talked about, then we're never going to have the money. We're just going to end up cutting the town budget again, and we're going to get none of the things done that we all believed we should have gotten done this year. I just asked that question because we need to make a decision on that topic. What do we want to do related to our prior request to have the Board of Education cut $400,000 from their previous year's budget? No, just go.
I think Scott's trying to say something. Let me unmute him. Scott? Scott, you're muted. Can you see if you can unmute yourself from your end, please?
Okay.
There he goes. Okay, go ahead, Scott.
I feel the same way that you do, yes.
That was easy. Good. Adrian?
Um, I mean, I agree with you that they, I think there's more room for them to cut. I don't think $400,000 is doable without cutting in, cutting into, you know, their mission to provide for the, you know, for the students. I think maybe there's a happy medium in there, but I don't think, I don't think asking for four is fair, personally. I mean, everyone's going to have an opinion, but having been to the meetings and seen the work that they were doing, I just don't think they can get to four. I just, you know, because I think that the response from the school is going to be to cut teachers immediately and not dig into what their issues are, which is really more contractual problems, personally, but.
Okay. Paula?
Yeah, no, I agree. I've been going to the meetings and hearing the same thing and seeing the same thing. So I'm not, I'm not sure that 400 is a fair number. I think it's got to be lower.
All right, Murray?
I concur.
Okay. So if we can agree that 400,000 is not the right number, is $50,000 the right number?
50,000 in addition to what we, what you mentioned earlier, that they said they did 50, or you're?
No, they have presented us with a number today that cuts their budget by $50,000 from the prior year. So my question is, is that the right number?
Well, I guess I'm going to answer your question with a question. And you all have a lot more experience with this than I do, but my thinking is the school's closed. I know they still have things that they're paying for. So how does that work with the school closed? And maybe they're not spending money on supplies. I know that's this year's budget, but how does that affect, can they push anything next year?
So let me interject one thing. One of the things, one of the governor's executive orders basically required towns to continue their contractual obligations as if all the kids are still employed. So the town, whether it wants to or not, is paying all the custodial staff, paying all the support staff, paying most of the support services for the town. And they're required to negotiate with the bus company, with DATCO, for a reasonable settlement to continue paying them. So I don't think, I think there will be some savings, but I don't think it's going to be huge. But I don't know.
I thought it was bus company, special education services, and technology services.
It also covered custodial staff and a bunch of other things.
I know they have to pay everyone that's staff-based.
Right.
But beyond that, I thought there was room. Again, even with that, I don't know that it's going to be a big number, though.
The way I read that executive order was that they could negotiate for contracts for actual costs incurred.
Yeah.
But that goes to the point that the superintendent's office and the finance department at the Board of Education or at AES needs to negotiate those things. And I did call Sally this week and asked her to determine if there would be any overages in their budget line items so that we do exactly that, Paula, which is, is look at some of the potential money not spent to be utilized to offset next year's budget. I haven't gotten anything back on that just yet. So the first thing that we got today was the revised budget from the Board of Education. So that revised budget, like I said, was $55,000, $55,000 decreased from the prior year. So we know that's their starting point. The question is, do we present the Board of Finance and whether it is lower than that? And that, we don't have to do that today at this meeting, but do all need to be thinking about. Because if we, as a community, are going to be able to minimize the impact to our residents on taxes and the mill rate going up this year, then we have to either find money, save money in other places, or, you know, use whatever we can to... Find money, save money in other sweet places and, or, you know, use whatever we can to minimize. Of milling. So, and I think that we're all probably on the same page that that's what we'd like to do. The only person we have is, I, for the four previous years that I sat on this board. Uh, we failed to really move the town forward or to do anything of any substance to improve the town. And uh, this was the first opportunity. We really probably had to do that. And co-invent is really impacting that and personally issues were. Patient and not just AES, but also. You know, I always talk to the other members of the board and say if have. If you have a customers, you have to cut your expenses that you can actually try to make money. And in this, if we have a decrease in students, we need to find uh appropriate levels of decreasing expenses. So I know that's difficult to come by, but it's actually something we as a community need to think about. And so I'm not asking for a decision to be made today, but I do really believe that we need to. Uh, look at the Board of Education and especially AES and, and look for additional cost savings.
Well, they, they have a meeting scheduled next week and the Board of Finance did already. Pass a request over to them to take an additional, I think it was forty five thousand off. Is that correct, Mark? Um, did you guys already send a letter over to them? Okay, Eric, did you communicate that over to them yet?
I did not cuz Mark originally at the meeting said he would discuss that with Shannon. So I did not inject myself in that process.
Okay. I mean, I. I know they're, they've already been asked to take another forty, forty-five, which would put about a hundred under. Are, are we looking for, it sounds like Jeff, you're looking for more than that, though. Do you have a number in mind?
Why, why were we all involved and the four, with the four hundred and now we've all changed our mind? I don't, I don't understand where, where that's coming from. We all decided that the only way that anything's gonna happen in this town is to. Find money from someplace and stop taxing everyone. So we need to find some money from somewhere. My opinion.
Look, I, I can, I can't speak for anyone else. I can only speak for myself, okay? I have been going to the meetings. Um, and. I don't know that there's four hundred thousand dollars there.
Adrian, I went to a meeting also, so. I was at a meeting.
I, I just, if you asked, if, if, if you asked me to try to make a recommendation right now. Looking at their budget of where to cut four hundred thousand dollars, and granted, I'm not an educator, I, 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 just to be clear. But if you ask me to come up with a four hundred thousand dollar cut on that budget. I don't see it. I, I, I would be hard pressed to give you a number that would not. You know, or a four hundred thousand dollar number, I should say, that would not impact the students. On, on a, on a level that, that I think is unacceptable, you know. I know we need to find money. But I don't know that we need to find it all in one place. I, I think is what I'm trying to say. I think.
Since you've been there, what is, what is the number?
I mean.
I'm not saying it has to be about, I'm just sitting and I'm not sure.
I mean, I, I can tell you, per, I personally wouldn't support more than two hundred. Anything above two hundred, I cannot support.
Well, we have our regular meeting on the thirteenth. I think we should all be coming to that meeting and, and get. Out of the way, so the Board of Finance can actually do it. I, I, I definitely think we need to, we need to sit there and, and push the school, uh, you know, to sit there. Try to look at those contracts that we all keep talking about that we know believe are in the town's interest, so. Anybody else wanna discuss this topic before we move on?
Well, if we're talking about. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
I just, I just wanna say a few things. Um, if we're gonna ask for a large amount from the school, we should um. We should have equal heartburn on the town side. I mean, we shouldn't ask the school to, to, to bear the brunt of. These cuts. I mean, I, I think there's things that we can get away with uh putting off this year. But I definitely think we need to concentrate on the roadwork and we need to concentrate on the Bunker Hill Bridge.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that's, that's my comments.
Jeff, would you have any objection to asking Eric to put together that budget that the Board of Finance was looking for to, to show us? If he can do something like that?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's doable. I just, I just think we need to find a couple hundred thousand on our side. Just, you know, if we're gonna ask the school for. To make significant cuts, we need to really look at our own budget and at the town side and then just to decide whether we need. Um, you know, we need a new mower this year, or we can get away with the other one for another year. I mean, I, and I, and I definitely think we need to do some roadwork. I mean, that definitely, definitely needs to happen and we definitely need to move forward on the bridge.
I, I just, I, I agree with you. I, I would like to have Eric put that together, I guess, you know, and it kinda. I, I think we all come to that table with different priorities and. I'd like him to be the one that has to live with the budget he puts together, you know?
It's just, it's just, I, you know, I, I know we had some money set aside for uh the fire truck fund. We had some money set aside for the. Community center building and I think we maybe need to look at putting that on hold and keeping that money in, in, in reserve because. I mean, this is unprecedented, what we're going through and um we really need to, we really need to watch our pocketbook. Because I don't know what's gonna even happen next budget season. We need to be prepared for, you know, pretty much anything. But we needed, we need to move the town ahead, so we, we need to work on those critical things and. Maybe just kinda tighten our purse strings a little bit with the other expenditures.
All right, so I, I'd like to, I guess at this point, we were, I'd like to make a motion then. We were, we were at what, eleven percent, Eric, something like that?
Yeah, we were, yeah, right around eleven percent total increase.
I, I'd like to make a motion then that we ask Eric to put a budget together that's under a five percent increase.
I mean, I, I can definitely do that. What I will tell you is that. RAM alone is gonna cost us about one point six mils right now. So that implies basically a level town budget. I mean, we can move some stuff around and still make our priorities, but that, that's gonna be basically a level town budget, just so that you know. I'm not saying we can't do that and I'm not saying we can't get a lot of what we, we want done with that.
But can we, I would, I would, I would want you as part of that, as part of this motion to look at using reserve funds. But still keeping us above the, the ten percent that the Board of Finance has set as, as a threshold. And if we need to collapse other funds or whatever we need to do to move that stuff around, that's what I'd like to see. I, I'd at least, at least give us a starting point for discussion when we come back to the table.
Okay. If that's what the board wants, I'll supply that to you tomorrow.
Can I get a second?
What?
Can I get a second from another select board member?
Well, one thing I'm concerned about is I don't wanna use, I, I don't wanna use our uh fund balance cuz we got into this discussion last year about. Using fund balance to, to fund the, the town's expenses. And if we get hit next year, I mean, we're just kind of, that, that's kinda kicking the can down the road in the other direction.
Uh, I, I'd like to only use fund balance for the bridge, you know, things that are one-time type things. The bridge, the trees and, and, and roadwork. It, I think that would be acceptable. Would that be acceptable to you, Jeff?
That would be acceptable, but I just, yeah, I don't wanna try to pay for regular town expenses with fund balance. Like if we, I mean, I said, this is critical and that fund balance is for emergencies and I think we're in an emergency situation at this.
Well, we're not, we're not touching, we're not touching the emergency reserve. Unless you tell me to.
No, I, I, I think.
I'm not including that.
I think Jeff's point is not, not even, we don't wanna pay for regular town expenses out of our overage balance. So if, if we're talking about adding a person to a department, say, we're not funding that out of, out of our savings. It needs to be. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah, like the, I mean, the trees with the, the, I mean, with the, the caterpillars and the tree, the damage that we had. And that's gonna be a one-time thing. That's just something that happens. Those are the things we should try to cover with these. Because I think that's just gonna be a one-year hit or, you know, for the following years it won't be as bad, but I think this is, we're gonna have a big hit. Coming this year with, with the tree removal.
I, I, I agree. So Jeff, would you be willing to second the motion to ask Eric to put that budget together?
Sure, I'll second it.
Where the guy?
I, no, I just wanna say I think it makes more sense to do it this way. This is step one. And then step two, we think about what the number is and come up with it that way. Cuz I, I'd like to see what Eric puts together and then that'll help me kind of with my thoughts about that number. That we're gonna talk about.
We need some discussion. We definitely need something to, so we can discuss.
Yeah, Scott?
Uh, yeah, you think that I need some, I need to say something, Adrian, right? You know, I spoke into a lot of taxpayers lately and they're all still in favor of the senior slash community center. Especially since this problem that we're having right now. So I, I don't think that the community center just should be taken off the. Not at all. They all, they all, almost unanimously, everyone I spoke to, I didn't speak about the tax, the budget or anything, I spoke about that. Expressly and they said that they still wanted to see that. They all said that it probably would have come in handy right now. So, and a lot of seniors, Republicans, Democrats, mostly Republicans. All said the same thing.
I, I, listen, I, I don't agree, I, I don't. I personally don't disagree with you. I, I, I think it would have came in handy. I think having a kitchen to be able to prepare meals and stuff like that would, would be great right now. Um, but. I don't know about anybody else. I know my wife hasn't had a check in three weeks, so, you know.
Well, there's always issues and at least, and all I said, it's a starting point and we can at least start to discuss a little bit more. As to what we really wanna bring to the taxpayers. I mean, because personally, the issue that we're facing this year is that. Because this is such a, a different process, we have to be. Earn and cut, you know, of, of what we're to ask our residents to incur. So we have to, we have to look at this and, and be as. You know, we may have to push some of the thing off that we all have to do right now for another year because we're gonna have to wait and see what really shakes out of all this.
Right.
But we need a starting, let's get the starting point. And uh, I will tell you one thing, you know, we probably need to communicate as a board to RAM. To make sure that RAM understands our issue of um, you know, the situation that we're current in. And, and the town of Andover and that, you know, if Eric is saying that the room budget is gonna increase. Our, our taxes by one point six mils, then we need to make a point to them that. Maybe they should think about doing the same things that we're having to think about doing.
Well, I mean, it's a separate issue from this motion, but we, I think we should use all the town's. Current media platforms to ask people to sign on to that RAM call that's coming up. I think it's April twentieth or twenty-second, something like that?
April twentieth.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I, I think we should be using the town's media in every avenue we have to get residents to call into that. Into that call and let them know that, you know. Um, unfortunately, residents haven't been very vocal at those meetings. It's one or two people here and there, so. We need to get people mobilized for that.
So we have a motion in front of us. Um, would we like to, any first question we'd like to vote? We all sit, all in favor? I.
I.
So Eric, you will sit there and help us through that process and get us a revision on your budget document?
So you're, if I understand correctly, you want a budget that still funds. The uh, at least a, a portion of the bridge. You want one that does roadwork. Um, and does some tree trimming and comes in under, basically, so we bring the total budget in under a five percent increase. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. We'd like you to try to fulfill the things that we, we know we need. So I think like land use has been a discussion. We need, we need hours there. We know that Kathy Pelosi has ma, has. Decided to step down as of June, so we need to figure out some, a solution for that, so. You know, if, if it's possible to include those things, but those things can't be funded out of. They can't be funded out of reserve.
So Eric, you're gonna have to make some cuts and what we're asking you to do is you take the first crack at the cuts.
Sure.
So then we, what you've done and then determine if we like, we don't like them, we need to make more. And then.
Understood.
We should probably schedule another meeting. Well, we have meeting thirteen, so what's today? Today is the third. Um, we'll get back to it. Maybe we schedule another meeting next week after you get us your first crack at it.
Yeah, and I.
Tuesday.
And, and Scott, can I ask you, can you, I, I, you guys haven't had a chance to have a meeting yet. With the community. Thing, right?
Oh, yeah, no, it's supposed to be the eleventh thing, or no, or the first.
But do we, I mean, do you or Jeff have any indication as to a cost factor that we need? I mean, and, and I know originally the state was talking about funding some of the grants again. That we, and we should have been back in line. Um, is there any opportunity in that to, to look at what we actually need for that community center slash senior center? If we're going in that direction? If that's what you'd like to try to put forward, Scott?
I, I, me and Jeff need to get a, have a meeting.
Yeah, we need to schedule something. Now that we have Zoom, we could probably do, we could probably do a meeting. Um, and then one thing I wanted to add to, to Scott's question about the community centers. I think at the last budget meeting, we decided we were gonna move the library fund money over for the community center. So that money's already dedicated for a building fund, so we really wouldn't be cutting that out of the budget because it's a dedicated fund.
Sure, we are. If you're expecting me to come under five percent, that money's getting repurposed and it's not getting repurposed for a senior center.
Well, can we? Can we legally do that? If it was, it was, if it was, if it was meant for another, for a building fund, if it was dedicated fund?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you're asking, is it legal to do it? Yes.
Well, it's, it's legal as long as it, it would, to be clear, so everyone understands. It would have to be spelled out as part of the budget document that we are taking a fund and moving it to another location. It couldn't just be done. It'd have to be noted in the budget document.
So the Board of Selectmen by charter has the authorization. To move money out of existing funds.
Even one that was, even one that was passed as part of a budget?
Sure, yep.
Okay, all right.
Well, to be really honest on that issue. Eric, if, if your thought is that you're going to move the library fund to do roadwork or. Something along that lines.
Sure.
I, I do believe we, well, I'll go this way, Eric. We're, we're gonna discuss that issue.
Sure.
You, hey, you can make that as a um. As one of your, your points and then at our next meeting, we'll have a discussion about it as to where.
I, I think.
Absolutely.
I think to Jeff's point, it's more palatable to have a building fund be moved to a community building fund rather than. Moving it to something else.
And, and that's okay. I mean, I, the Board of Selectmen, that would probably be one of the items that Eric might get pushed back on. So let, let's. Right?
Ultimately, it's gotta be the budget you push for, not the budget I want, so.
Well, let's see what yours looks like and then we'll figure it out.
Sure.
It's a, it's a budget you need to support, but it's a budget that you need to be able to operate the town effectively and efficiently. And get some of the priority have done.
Sure.
And that's the key.
Well, just, I, I, I'd like to have at least two or three days to sit with that budget before we have a meeting, though. You know, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna come into a meeting and then be handed a budget, just so.
So just in a preliminary, let's think about extra data because we can do that. You know, it'll give Eric enough time to get it to us and then it'll give us enough time to uh go through it. So um, are we, have we been up to the uh, the process and the discussion? I'm assuming that, that we've already gone past item four. Eric, is that accurate?
Uh, yes, I think we're basically on four. Now, the only question I had is. Does the board have any more feedback for me in terms of what the timeline? In terms of what the timeline, so I put out a timeline. You know, is that something, are you happy with that? Are you unhappy with that? You know, where do you want to go with it?
Well, given what, given what Dennis is saying. I wouldn't mind adding a little bit of time to that because that'll give us a chance to see what Ram really does. And what the school does.
Dot air timeline. And Eric, share your screen again, please.
Sure.
Because I thought Eric's timeline had Ram as the decision by the end of April. So.
Correct.
We're going to know what Ram is doing.
Well, he, all right.
Yeah. So you'll know Ram basically either the 20th or the 22nd. They may pass it after their budget meeting on the 20th. But they allowed themselves till the 22nd in case their members wanted to make significant changes prior to the adoption of the budget. So, but what I'm saying is that you should probably plan on handing over by the 27th of April. Handing over to the Board of Finance a proposed budget. Um, as well as a motion to authorize them to schedule an online meeting, solicit commentary, pass a budget and set a mill rate. So that gives them enough time to do their jobs.
As long as, as long as we think Ram's going to adopt by the 22nd, I'm fine with that, but.
Right. Yeah. I was going to say the same thing. What if they stall?
Right. I mean, I don't want to be on the 27th having to push a budget to BOF if we don't know where Ram's at at that point. Cause there was a. There, there is a, a belief right now. I think that Ram is going to try to. Jam a bunch of things in that budget, given that they don't have to get approval now. So, you know.
Be there, that ball field that everybody was talking about is approved. They put it in the budget.
No, no.
I read it today. Redo the field. Yeah. I saw it in there.
Well, a, again, it, so those things are, I think we have to be. Aware of. And again, it, it goes back to what I was saying. We need to use all our platforms to get people on that call.
With, with all of this, this situation being so fluid, it's not as if. Even if this is our timeline, we can sit there and, and change it.
Sure.
Uh, it, but here's the thing, Jeff, I, I know that you don't participate in social media. But most people, once they look at it once, will not go back and look at your modified timeline. So if we put something out there, people are going to remember that date. And they're not going to go back and look at it again and go, oh, oh, look, they changed it. So.
Right. But we could, we could always, we could update, we can do a new post and update the information. Right?
I'll tell you what, why don't we, why don't we at our regular scheduled meeting refine our timeline?
Fine.
Right?
Okay.
We don't have to decide it right now, but I'm telling you. Even though I'm not on social media, um, I do read the paper. Scott and I both, we're pretty good at reading the paper.
You don't read the paper because it's not being printed right now. For reference.
Doesn't it get mailed to me? I thought the post office could still work in Adrian.
Uh, yeah, well, there's no River East right now.
Okay.
Yeah, River East has shut down publication.
You know that thing that comes in your mailbox? That you read?
No, has a lot of good editorial.
Adrian, when you get a minute, when you get a minute, check their budget and you'll see that there was 350 or something to redo one field and a. Hundred and a quarter or something to redo a baseball field.
Okay. So we have to address that. So. The timeline, let's try to set the timeline for our, our next regularly scheduled meeting and then we can post it to social media and all the platforms we need to post it to. So that we can, uh. Let everybody participate as much as possible.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Is there anything else, Eric?
Yeah. The other question I had is that we really kind of need decisions from you all on is how we plan on going about. Notifying the public, number one, and then soliciting comments. And, uh, I'm, I'm sharing my screen right now, which shows kind of where we're going. Amanda has created a Google Doc, which you should have all had to look at. That will have all the budget information on it as well as a reply form. So the public. Can make commentary directly to that Google Doc. Um, I think that's what Ram has done and that looks like a pretty effective method of doing it. Um, we are also setting up a YouTube channel or correction. We have set up a YouTube channel. Thank you Paula and Amanda for that. And Nick Levine of the Community Voice Channel is, uh, recording all these meetings. And they will all be available on the town of Andover's YouTube channel, uh, for all of eternity. Um, the third thing is doing some sort of budget presentation online at some point. At some point, we're probably going to need either, either the Board of Finance to do it, or somebody from the Board of Selectmen. To do it, to actually present the budget online, you know, and solicit feedback. That could be done. Through the YouTube channel, that could be done on Facebook Live. There's a number of platforms to do it. But we would have to figure out who's going to do it and when you're going to do it. I think we should probably consider a mailer to all the residents. That can be done very short-term notice. Our printer, uh, whose name I can't pronounce, saved my life, starts with a G. Has said they right now have about a one day turnaround time because they're not that busy. So we would put out a mailer to all residents with information on how they can access the budget. Um, and provide feedback. Um, we should have an email address. It's already set up now. Actually, it's budget@andoverct.org. That anybody can solicit comments to. And what's going to happen is Amanda's basically going to condense all those contacts. Or those comments into a single document and then submit that to either the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance. Depending on where we are in the process. Um, and then we're going to put the notices up on the town hall. Window, which we've been using as our official notice board since the town halls closed. And then the other thing we've kept, several people have asked me whether we would use the town's notice board. Cause I guess for whatever reason, the rec commission owns a notice board. Um, and several people have suggested that we put the notice board at the transfer station exit. Um, I'm personally not particularly in favor of that idea. Um, but that's just me. Maybe that's a valid way to reach townspeople also and get the information to them.
I have to tell you, Eric, I would disagree, given our experiences with. Political campaigns in town. I think the transfer station is a fantastic place to get information across.
Well, if you want, we can put up a notice board at the exit of the transfer station.
Yeah.
I opposed to tape, I wouldn't even be opposed to taping things on the compacters. I mean, I think that's the only place that people are going to right now is the transfer station. One of the only.
No, you don't want people, you know, cause then people are just going to group up.
Group up.
Okay.
Last thing you want to do is do it where they, they all get together. If they do it at the exit, they're going one at a time and they're in their cars.
I mean, social, social media is definitely the platform to reach a majority of people. So maybe right now we can hold off on the transfer station until we, uh.
Well, once, once we have something in place to put out there, I think the, the exit board definitely. Maybe if, if we're, if we don't want to put it up on the street, we can always put it on the lower section there before you go up the hill somewhere, you know?
Well, the exit board, maybe it could just be something like check the town website for information. So it can be a general.
Yeah. Budget, budget information available, town website, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be detailed. Just check the town website or visit the Facebook page. Um, and which I don't see this on here. Can we add to this, um, the town website?
Sure.
Did you finish fixing it? Yeah, Paul?
No, I was waiting for you to jump back in.
Eric, um. How many, how many residents signed up for, um. Emergency notifications?
Last time I checked around 750.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we need to use that too.
Yeah, definitely.
We have email addresses for most of those individuals?
Most, but not all.
I mean. That would be.
Good. Sorry.
Paul, after you.
Oh, so kind. Thank you. No, I, I would just say for that. Again, push people to the website or the Facebook page, whatever the message is. It doesn't have to be a long email. Just something, hey, it's budget season. We're, we have a new, um, plan in place. Please visit our website or our Facebook page for more information. It doesn't have to be a long, um, you know, document or something like.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to see us, somebody needs to proof that before it goes out. Cause the last one was like, you know. A book.
Okay. Well.
So you want a novella, not a novel is what you're saying?
That would be a preference under a hundred pages. Yes.
Listen, I'm going to cut Jeff off again. I'm so sorry, but here's, here's my thing. If we want to build. Our audience on Facebook and we want people to go to our website. We have to use our other channels to say, please visit and not put a whole bunch of info there. So. If we keep it short and sweet, they're going to know to go check that every once in a while, even when we don't send out a message.
So you're saying drive, use it as a channel driver.
Yes, the, the emergency system or whatever. It, and then of course, if there's. Something that we really need to get out there, you know, God forbid, then we, we use that. Um, with detailed info, but I think for something like this, for, um, to let them know. How the budget process is going to be, we, we push them to the website and the Facebook page.
Well, and I, I think that. We, we did that pretty well with some of the things. Um, Amanda made some modifications to the posts. So that the front page of the website pushed them with a direct link. I wonder if we should actually. Um. If we can, is anyone have an objection to putting a link on the town website to link back to the Facebook page?
No, we should, if, if it's possible, but I mean, with the new website, we'll, we'll have the icon there, but.
Can we do it on the old one on the front page?
It's already on there.
It is?
Yes. The link to the Facebook page is on the homepage of the website.
Okay. All right. Go check it. Go to it. Um, Amanda, thank you very much. Then so.
You're welcome. I would encourage you all to look at the homepage of the website. It has all information that our residents would need for dealing with this COVID crisis. So please let me know if you have any suggestions.
Um. I, I think part of the problem is Amanda, I just went to it. It's, it's at the bottom of your red column. Can you do an icon so that it actually shows up? Cause. Right now, the problem is everything is, is text format. So it's getting lost in that. No one's going to see that.
I don't know. I, I, this site is so archaic. I, I don't know if it's possible, honestly.
If only we had our new website.
Let me ask that question. When is that going to launch?
Well.
Okay. So to be clear, it is possible because you have a link on the East Coast Greenway. So Amanda, if you look and see how they did the East Coast Greenway link, we should be able to do a Facebook link the same way.
Okay. I'll work on that and make it happen.
Please. Thank you. If there's something we can do to help you.
All right.
Well, I'm sorry I interrupted you. Go ahead.
How rude.
You didn't apologize to me.
I'm sorry. Did you say something, Jeff? I had you unmute.
Yes, exactly. Eric, what, what is remaining from me?
Uh, so is there anything in terms of, does the plan we put forward in terms of notifying public and soliciting comments? Are you on board with it? Are you guys on board with us sending out a mailer? Is there anything you want to add or subtract from that list?
Um, yeah, I would say, um, number 10, you got to put the emergency system in there. Um, I think we definitely need to do a mailer. I don't know how much that's going to be. Maybe we can get a quote to see.
If we can find a printer that's open.
Well, yeah, so we're all set with our, our standard printer is on board with doing it. They have a one day turnaround. I don't know what the exact cost is, but it's, I mean, the majority of the cost is just the cost of postage. Actually printing and, you know, single tabbing a piece of paper is pretty cheap.
I think if you reach out to Carol, she'll probably give it to you off the top of her head.
Well, we usually put out one for the budget referendum anyways, and it doesn't sound like we're going to be putting one out for this year anyway. So that's.
Exactly.
That's a good point.
So what I will say is the money is there for it, um, already budgeted. So it's not an issue of that. Just a question of whether you want to do it or not. And my suggestion is we do it.
All right. I agree. Yeah.
All right. Um. Eric, I, we are in April now as well and we're talking budget. Um, have you started looking at where we are for this year? And is it possible when considering your budget changes? I've just sort of thought of this. That you look at whatever shifting you can do this year to pick up stuff that was in there? You know?
Yeah, actually I was having a discussion with Barbara about that very thing this morning. Um, and seeing what we could push on this year's because there are some areas that. Because we're just not doing as much right now, we're going to have some savings.
Okay. I thought I'd throw it out there.
Yep.
Okay. So any other issues related to the notification to the public and soliciting comments? Anybody else?
No, I just, I just have a quick question about number three. So. Facebook Live, would it be? Somebody doing it from their home? Because. I'm not aware of how you can do it live with multiple accounts.
So I got that suggestion from Mark, who's the administrator or town manager administrator, I guess from Columbia. And he said, basically what they're doing is they're having a room with exactly three people on it. And one of the meeting room web cameras, and it's basically Chair Board of Finance, Finance Director and himself as Town Administrator. And they're doing a budget presentation and receiving commentary on it. As one of their methods for notifying the residents. Um, now we don't have a, you know, that as a webcam. Um. But, uh, it's not to say we couldn't get one.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that we, and we could probably figure out how to do it without a webcam. Um. But that's something we can talk about down the road.
I can get us a webcam. That's not a problem.
Look at you coming through.
Well. We can have the puppets do it, Paula. Let's have the puppets do it.
Yeah, you can use a sock puppet, the two sock puppets giving the budget present.
I don't know what you're talking about.
So. Back.
We heard.
Back to our, our meeting. We will figure out how to do the Facebook Live and so that everyone that's on social media can actually get updated as to our budget. And we'll sit there and continue to update. Eric, if we come up with anything else on, uh, notifying the public, we'll let you know what we can do.
Sure.
Um, I mean, I'd even throw out there. I mean, I can make myself available if. You know, people want a time to be able to reach out to us to talk, you know. I mean, whether it's Facebook Live or people can send in questions that we can answer. You know, just make ourselves available to answer questions on something like that. So that it's not just a presentation, we can have something interactive if they'd like. You know, I, I'd be willing to put some time in for that if that'll help.
All right. Well, we'll sit there and address that at our regular meeting on the 13th. So let's sit there and move this to the next step. So. I think we actually. What is the next section on our public comment related to this? Or do we have anything else that we want to do?
That's it for me.
I have to get to my other computer to see my agendas. Okay, Amanda, do you handle public speak? See if there's any residents that would like to talk to us, uh, or talk at us. Um. Please be aware that we're only going to have public speak for, um. Is two minutes acceptable to the rest of the members of the Board of Selectmen?
Yep.
Yeah. And I just want to say, so if, if you want to do public speak, um, I can't see everybody's face, so. We'll have to just let you guys allow yourselves to unmute yourself. But if we start getting feedback, I'm going to have to mute everyone and we'll start over. just let you guys, allow yourselves to unmute yourself, but if we start getting feedback, I'm gonna have to mute everyone and we'll start over, okay?
I saw Elaine was up. Elaine?
I have to unmute myself. Okay, hi, yeah, Elaine Buchart, East Street. Um, I just wanted to mention that I, I had requested that Amanda go ahead and record all of these meetings and they can just be sent to CVC and put on their YouTube, like the ones that we were doing with camera. So, these meetings are gonna go to CVC and they're gonna be displayed just like when we had the cameras there.
Thank you, Elaine. We actually have Nick from CVC on the Zoom meeting today and he is broadcasting this live, and then it will be available on the CVC site after the meeting.
That's excellent. So it's a direct feed now?
Yes.
Perfect.
Anyone else?
Thanks for making that happen, Elaine.
You're welcome.
Okay, we've got an iPhone that popped up. Anybody else wanna talk during public speaker?
It looks like you had Jed Larson opened up. He's unmuted.
Okay. Well, if that is, uh, is there anyone else from the public room that would like to speak to us? Oh, no. I think that's a pocket now.
Yeah, I just muted that.
Right, so I think if no one else wants to sit there and, uh, uh, participate in public speak, then I think, uh, we're ready during this, this meeting. Anyone like to make that motion?
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded.
Alright, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. Eric, thank you, Amanda, thank you, appreciate all you do.
Thank you, stay happy.
Thanks, Paula.
Cheers.
Thank you for all your, uh, social networking skills, you and Amanda.
My pleasure, my pleasure. Alright, guys, be safe.
Yeah, cheers.